Think I'm Doolo, baby ace, red chucks, red strings, I think I'm B-Brave, G-Sex, Blood Gang, nigga, every set, I think I'm Doolo, baby ace, red chucks, red strings, I think I'm B-Brave, G-Sex, Blood Gang, nigga, every set, 350 nigga, Woodway, Gangsta Nigga Swag, but the bitches calling sex appeal, Young Bosco, I'm almost famous nigga, who the fuck said that? Money don't make a nigga, money make me buy shit, money make me want more, money make a nigga go nuts in the loose show, that's my nigga Bleed, he got me blowin' good, .5 on the scale, have to swish a bull, I'm a street nigga, queen street nigga, that light is not a fire truck, that's me nigga, all my bitches give me cash, yeah they give me everything I want, and I be in the videos, but nah, I ain't a CEO, and I'm all out of town, I hope the world don't catch a nigga, blowing money fast, like a motherfucking reckless nigga, outta state plates, nervous on the highway, devil bag boy, like my nigga Lil Wayne, I got dudes boy, all of them shoot shit, guns be tucked in the trunk like a roof bitch, I'm just saying though, I see the burgundy, where the ice at my nigga? I think I'm Mosberg, full pack, true beef funk, no bullshit, I think I'm Wacko, no brains, Jerry W.
Uh, uh, did you get beat up? Nah, but I beat your ass, shut your bitch ass up, I'll fuck you up then, shut up and I'll shoot you in your mouth bitch ass nigga, Queen Street, how about that? Bitch ass, Queen Street, I'll fuck you up, shut your bitch ass up, watch this, bitch, Queen Street, get tired of you bitch ass nigga, you niggas just be talking, 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 until I see you with, bah! Shut your bitch ass up, bitch ass nigga, fuck you thought you was talking to, bitch ass, Queen Street, that's what niggas do is wanna talk on my page, blood, god damn, pause, fucking pause, what's the deal? Uh, let me see, I need some weed, I'm out here on Melrose, I'm saying, why you telling me, bruh? Why you telling me? What's the deal, what's the deal, what's the deal? Shout out Iron Lisco? What's the deal, don't tell me to shout your city out, bruh, don't just come, hey shout, blood, I don't like that, bruh, shout out me, tell me, shout me out, don't come on my page and tell, fuck you just jump on, look, watch this, bruh, look, where you at, bruh, that was annoying, bruh, watch this, bah, fuck out my face, bruh, fuck you just, fuck a nigga just walk in my house and tell me, hey, shout me out, bruh, fuck out my face, bruh, you know, walk in my shit, don't even introduce yourself, blood, wear that, shout me out, shut your bitch ass the fuck up, fuck is you? Just tell me to shout you out, hey, I'm in here, shout me out, shut your bitch ass up, bruh, fuck is you? Fuck kinda shit is that, bruh, like, that's like me walking into a house full of bitches, I just come to a house full of bitches, suck my dick, hey, blood, who the fuck is you, get your bitch ass the fuck out my face, fuck is you, for what? Who the fuck are you, bruh? Bitch ass, I'm saying, bruh. You got the baddies in here, Sco? Yeah, where they at, let's see, where they at, bruh, let me see, let's see if we see something, who wanna go live? Let's go live, where the baddies at? Let's run something, Queen Street coughing in the good mood, I just ate a fat ass lobster tail, you seen that shit on my page? Fat ass lobster tail, main lo-, fat ass main lobster tail and shit, bruh. On the third day, it ain't even a weekend, it's fucking Thursday, me a Thursday, I like lunch, me a Thursday, it ain't even a weekend, bruh, dog, boss, boss shit, boss. Uh, Kionna, Kionna, let me see, what's your profile pic looking at? Blah, your name Kionna, blah, if you don't get the fuck out of here, bruh, god damn, sausage fest, blood, how you telling me what I'm off, blood? Like, you like a weird nigga, bruh, like, how you, like, how would you know what I'm off? Watch this, bruh, let me set you free, bah, get your bitch ass the fuck out my face, blood, no Starboy shit, blood, let me set you free, it's my shit, bruh. You been watching that Unsolved, shit is better than the Tupac movie, nah, I ain't been watching it, I ain't watching shit, I don't watch TV, bruh, I'ma be honest with you, I don't watch TV, bruh, I don't even watch TV, I don't even wanna see TV. This is what I say to that, bullshit in, bullshit out, bruh, bullshit in, bullshit out, bruh, I don't watch TV, bruh, that's why kids so dumb, that's why like kids were dumb as fuck, you know when you grow, you know kids running around just making dumb ass retarded, that can't they watch, but, like, you don't know, like, while you a kid and you gotta watch kid program, that's why you, kids just be retarded, that's why kids be retarded, like, don't you, hey, I can't stand a mother that talking, hey baby, you want your baba? You want your baba? Bitch, don't talk to my baby like, like, bitch, the baby say baba because they ain't developed the fucking vocabulary to know how to say bato yet, so you're supposed to say it right, but you don't supposed to say bye-bye to, you want your baba? Oh baby, you want your baba? You want, bitch, stop the stupid bitch, quit talking to the baby like that, fuck a retard, that's why a kid be dumb as fuck, hey baby, you want your baba? Where your baba? Ain't no fucking baba, he say baba cuz he don't know how to say fucking bottle, you stupid bitch, you supposed to say it right, dumb motherfucker, it's my shit, bruh. I can't stand that, that's kinda like having kids with bitches like that, bruh. I gotta make sure you a scholar first, blood, 'cause I don't like, bruh, I don't wanna have no kid by no dumb ass bitches. I'm saying, ain't that annoying, you can't tell me that, that's, that's some annoying shit, bruh, like, I can't stand that shit, bruh, like, you gonna talk to your baba and boo-boo, oh baby and boo-boo, but, let's talk to the nigga in English, blood, talk to, blood, the fuck is you doing, bruh? That retarded shit, baba, boo-boo, oh baby, you move my mama, but, but, shut the fuck up, bruh, that weird shit, bruh. That's why the kids be dumb as fuck and slow to develop, you be wondering why that dumbass ain't talk, how come they not talking yet? Cuz your dumbass don't talk to him in English, that's why dumbass don't know how to talk yet, dumb bitch. Why he not talking yet? Cuz your dumbass ain't teaching him correct English, that's why, bitch, I'm saying. Nigga like me, I could chill, I could rap, I could harmonize, before we mixing your music, my nigga, shit sound like you record outside. Uh, blood, fuck all that though, roll the YGs and the gangstas out, blood, tell niggas hit the yard, blood, it's like Third Unlocked, blood, time of politics and talk, bullshit, Queen Street, Inglewood though, Inglewood though, what's the deal? I'm saying, what's the deal, blood? Fuck all that, blood, let's hit the yard, blood, fuck all that, blood, we standing in the, uh, we standing in the tundra, blood, we still standing in the corridor, let's hit the yard, blood, fuck that. Nigga standing in the tundra talking and shit, bro, you just standing in the tundra, brother, just get up out of here, bruh, fuck, why don't you hit the yard, bruh? What's the deal, whoa, seven hundred, who is that, abstracted great, what's the deal, blood, Inglewood though, bruh, what's the deal? We from the north? Yeah, that, Queen Street. Nigga like me, I could chill, I could rap harmonize. What's the deal? You lost your paperwork? You lost your paperwork? You did? Well, guess what, bruh? PC, blah, fuck outta here, bruh, you lost your paperwork, go get that, bruh, PC up, I'm saying, what's the deal? Long Beach to Inglewood salute, what's the deal, real niggas, west coasting, what's the deal, what's the deal? Walk that maintain, the main line, you mean, you mean the white, the main line, main line, bruh? Uh, goddamn autocorrect, right, goddamn autocorrect, I don't know, I don't know. Uh, blah, whoa, whoa, what's up, my nigga, dog, blah, whoa, whoa, the mixtape being done, look, 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 see what I was telling y'all? Y'all don't be listening and pay attention, look, I told y'all what I say, Bracken, the mixtape, Bracken, the mixtape, is a compilation of all my old hardest songs that people already know about, that, that, you feel me? So I'ma just put all the hardest shit together on one CD, so y'all ain't gotta look everywhere for it, it's gonna be all together, the hardest shit, all on one CD, that's what Bracken is, Bracken already done, I just gotta put it together, I just ain't sat down to like, you know, it's already done now, it's already done. Um, blood, what's the deal, Milwaukee, what's the deal, Milwaukee? Chris Brown with the shits again, I mean, it just look like, you know, honestly, honestly, I'm just joking, like, it just, it's only a picture, bruh, it's like, you just got a picture, you know some bitches like it rough, blood, ain't nothing but a picture, the nigga got his hand around, some bitches like you to get choked and spanked in their hair, but like, you know, it's just a picture, y'all just, that's the paparazzi be stalking, blood, you know me, I just be clowning, I'll just be clowning, yeah, he wasn't doing nothing to her, he just, you know, it's just funny, you know I made it funny, you know it's funny, you know you laughed, it was funny, blood, you know it's fucking funny, but, he wasn't doing nothing to the bitch, like, you know these bitches like it rough, I be having bitches asking me to choke the fuck out of them, I don't like, I be feeling uncomfortable, I don't like that shit, no. You know some bitches like it rough, blood, it just looked funny though, it looked it funny, so that's why I could put my caption, that's why I could put my killer caption to it, and it's fucking hilarious, cuz it just looked it funny, blood, so with my caption to add to it, fucking classic, right? Right? With my fucking genius captions, bruh, I'm saying, it's all in the caption, it's all in the caption, the picture could be whatever, but the caption is what's gonna steer and drive your imagination, blood, it's the caption, right? Anybody could post the same shit, but it ain't, is everybody gonna make you feel the same way about it, bruh? Like, I seen it on the other page, but it didn't make me feel the way I made it feel, I'm saying. Let me know when that album drop in, somebody let him know, they all know, bruh, we already know, why do I gotta let you individually know? Like, who are you, let, I'm saying, bruh, why do niggas feel like they gotta get individualized on here and single that out too? Like, bruh, nah, nah, I'm saying, bruh, I'm saying, bruh, that's too much, it's too much, bruh, it's too much. Uh, what's the deal, what's up, my nigga, dog, blood? Blah, y'all been watching that cool ass, what's this nigga name? Stefan, no, not Stefan, Stefan, Stefante, Stefan, the one that died, Stefante, little gay ass, little gay embarrassing ass, blood, making a mo- blood, you just taking this shit and turning it into something, blood, you not even, like, bruh, I'm not telling you, I'm not saying how you should mourn, blood, you know you can mourn how you want to, bruh, but you're not mourning, nigga, you're presenting this to fucking congress in the front of the world, bruh, and you supposed to be, you know you supposed to get up here and make some sense and plead your case, and you up here acting like a hoe bitch, nigga, like you stomping the yard, nigga, you walk in the fucking courtroom stomping the yard, looking gay as fuck, right, they're like, bruh, that shit ain't no good, look, blood, what the fuck kinda result you, you on CNN looking like an idiot, looking like you off that potter, nigga up there growling and shit, nigga, you on stage with fucking Al Sharpton growling and shit, that's that potter, nigga, I'm like, what the fuck, that's that potter, bruh? I forgot to put, post that video too, I meant to post it, blood, but I, uh, I was moving around and shit, I'm finna post it in a minute when I get off here, bruh, looking like you was off that potter shit, and, mourn, like, blah, I'm not, you know, you don't tell a nigga, I mean, I understand a nigga that mourn, his brother got killed, you know what? I lost a lot of fucking brothers, you know what? I done lost a lot of fucking brothers, his brother got killed, yeah, you know what? I feel that, I done lost a lot of fucking brothers, blood, I'm saying, bruh, but we in front of the world, blood, this is a sensitive issue, bruh, and you in front of the world, blood, and you trying to make a statement, and you up there looking like you did all the fucking potter, blood? Like you did all the potter, god damn, did you leave some? You up there off all the potter, up there looking fucking stupid, come in the courtroom stomping the yard, like this is fucking, you got served or something, what the fuck you thought they were, you got, nigga, jump all on the desk like you got served, blood, fuck you think you Omarion looking like, bruh? Omarion looking like, bruh, jumping all on shit, blood, climbing on shit, blood, fuck is you, nigga, Tory Lanez or something, bruh? Fuck you think you at a Tory Lanez show climbing on shit? I'm saying, bruh, nigga, in front of the fucking world, nigga, your brother just got murdered by the fucking police, you in front of the world trying to plead your case, blood, you up there looking like a fucking imbecile, blood? Like a fucking fruity imbecile like that with your little gay ass, bruh, I'm just saying, bruh, that shit, that shit, nigga, is disappointing, bruh, nigga, you supposed to be up there pleading your case, this is what I'm saying, nigga, do we want fucking Starboys representing us and speaking for us? Or do we want stand up real black men, bruh? You was up there, you, blood, you ain't gotta be a fucking gangster to be a stand up black man, blood? You was in there acting like one of these hoe ghetto ass, unsexiest prostitutes or something, bruh? You in front of congress and shit, bruh, you up there acting like a hoe fucking monkey, blood? Monkey face, bruh, that shit was annoying, bruh, I ain't gonna lie, that shit annoyed me, bruh, I was annoyed by that, bruh. But that was a time where you was supposed to get up there and make niggas proud, get up there and say some shit that was heartfelt, that was thoughtful, blood, that, 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 that made a motherfucker feel how you was feeling, bruh? And you got up there and just, a motherfucker can't even feel sad for you, blood, cuz you up there acting like a fucking monkey, blood? Monkey ass, Caesar looking like, blood, climbing all on shit, goofy ass, what the fuck was that, bruh? I'm just saying, bruh, like, like, that shit ain't, like, I understand a nigga mourning, I understand, like, you know you love, but, bruh, that's not the way to go, it's a certain way you do shit, bruh, you in front of the whole world, blood, you getting your fifteen minutes to shine in front of the whole world, we trying to make motherfuckers feel sorry, feel this, get tired of this shit, and you up there, you get, nigga, you up there showing them why the fuck we getting killed? Like, you up there just, I see, nigga, you ain't doing nothing, but man, I bet you, I guarantee you some motherfucker, like, I see why that nigga got killed, I see why they killing that monkey ass, monkey ass. Shit be embarrassing, bruh, these niggas is weird, weird as fuck, nigga, this is a moment to shine, nigga, this is a public moment, this was a moment to stand up, shine, really say what you had to say, blood, you got the spotlight on you, and you acting like a fucking monkey off the potter. Fucking, but, that's that potter, that's that potter. I'm just saying, bruh, like, nigga, it's a certain way to do shit, y'all talking about, oh, we tired of these police, nigga, nigga, that, bruh, it's a certain way to do shit, bruh, you niggas ain't gonna do nothing but get destroyed, that, you not gonna never, ever win that way, all this belligerent shit, blood, if the police got you, bruh, if you done ran, the police done called up to you, they caught you, they got you, good, bruh, fucking, it's over, bruh, stop trying to fight and wrestle, you niggas, bruh, comply, bruh, they got you, bruh, you got, if you ran already, they, they got you, bruh, they got you, bruh, then you not finna get away, you not finna fight them and get away, then you not finna fight with them and they're gonna be like, alright, you win, bruh, go ahead and get up out of here, bruh, it's not gonna happen that way, bruh, I'm saying, bruh, you gotta learn how to fight, bruh, if you niggas gonna fight, learn how to fucking fight them, bruh, I'm saying, bruh, you niggas ain't gonna never win that way, you gonna lose every fucking time, bruh, every fucking time, you gonna lose, bruh, they not gonna let you niggas win like that, bruh, that's not the way, I'm saying. Niggas be weird, bruh, like, niggas, like, you try to support your black people, but I can't support fuckery, blood, like, blood, I can't support no fucking ignorance, blood, that shit is weird, weird shit, what the fuck are we gonna get accomplished like that? What the fuck are you gonna get done like that, bruh? Ain't nothing gonna happen, you ain't doing nothing but making a motherfucker look at you, look fucking stupid, bruh? Look, get your bitch outside, while you obstructing my vision, blood, blah, you obstructing my vision, bruh. You too, you obstructing my vision too, look, blah, get your bitch outside here, blood, you obstructing my vision, bruh, I can't concentrate. We ain't gonna win in America, period, this ain't for us. Exactly, exactly, so what the fuck you think acting ignorant, acting an ass is gonna do for you, blood? What do you think that's gonna do for you, bruh? You think, what kinda statement you think that's gonna make, bruh? They gonna find somewhere to put your stupid ass, fuck is, you not gonna win like that, bruh? If we, I don't like to fight, my thing, I don't like to lose, blood, I don't like, that's why I don't play game, blood, I don't like to lose, I'm a sore loser, so if a motherfucker coming into a fight, if a motherfucker fighting for something, it's that, nigga ain't coming in this shit to lose or look stupid at the end, blood? I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, bruh, nigga ain't coming into no fight to lose or look stupid, blood, I don't plan on losing, blood, you know what I'm saying, bruh? Like, fuck, niggas be weird, blood, niggas ain't gonna never win, I know we ain't gonna win like that, definitely, that's not gonna win no victory, you not finna get no kinda victory, like, they didn't do shit, but make you look like a fucking monkey that they think you are, bruh, I'm saying. Nigga, this weird, bruh, niggas don't think right, like, bruh, you gotta fight with your mind, bruh, you'll never, like, blood, they been trying it for years, you not gonna win like that, bruh, y'all never win like that, bruh, I'm saying. Shit be crazy, bruh. What's the deal now, what's up, my good people now, what's the deal, what's the deal? My bad, I'm just rambling now, what's the deal? Good afternoon, I mean, what time is it? Afternoon, yeah, good afternoon. Gotta start killing them, fuck it. Blood, you sound stupid, bruh, like, what do you think that's gonna accomplish, bruh? You think you finna just start killing, gotta start killing, like, what do you think that's gonna accomplish, bruh? That sound fucking stupid, that sound fucking stupid, like, bruh, like, quit trying to lead people to destruction, blood, like, I don't wanna see people lead to destruction, bruh, I just, you're never gonna, you think you're gonna win against, like, bruh, they're never gonna let you win, blood? America don't negotiate with terrorists, blood, you not finna win, bruh, that's not the way to do it, that's what I'm saying. Nigga, this weird, bruh. Shut your monkey ass up, blood, you sound stupid as fuck, you ain't got no profile pic, your name is sus, blood, shut your bitch ass up, hoe bitch out here, watch this, blah, shut the fuck up, bruh. Jesus, nigga, you gonna be a follower your whole fucking life, bitch ass. Uh, nigga can't even have a real conversation, blood, that's how much a bitch, that's why you niggas gonna stay losing, blood, like, I can see your mindset, blood, you niggas be bitches, blood, nigga can't even have a real conversation, nigga saying some stupid ass shit, you monkey ass nigga, blood? Coolest monkey in the jungle looking like, blood? I'm saying, bruh, I get tired of you niggas my fucking self, I get tired of you, I know they tired of you, nigga, I get tired of you niggas my fucking self, bruh, I'm saying. Fucking oysters, blood, niggas fucking oysters, blood, niggas gonna stay broke, you niggas got money in your pocket, but you gonna stay broke, fucking oysters, blood. Bro, would you get on Wildin' Out? No, I don't wanna be on Wildin' Out, I don't wanna be on Wildin' Out, that shit kinda corny to me, I ain't gonna lie, Wildin' Out kinda corny to me, I wouldn't get on Wildin' Out, I don't wanna get on Wildin' Out. Pass Jada Bag, what's the deal for, what's the deal? Sunny Side, what's the deal for? What you think about DMX and his one year sentence? I think it's very unfortunate that the brother can't get his life together, bruh, I think it's very unfortunate that a man that was at a, at a point of greatness like he was at a time, bruh, that a man like that, that, and then, you know, he's an intelligent brother, like, he ain't even a dumb, the nigga intelligent though, but I, i- it bothers me that a man like that let drugs come in and control his life, blood? And, and let his shit just fucking go down the drain to that, like, nigga, you in jail for, like, bruh, you was the nigga, you was that nigga, bruh, hold on, selfie. Queen Street, you know these niggas be hatin', but, but, yeah, you was the nigga, bruh, so how you let drug like, bruh? Eh, and then, it ain't even him though, blood, it's like, all these black nigga, all you black nigga do, the same niggas get a lot of money, and then they let drugs fuck it all up, then they let drug, like, I don't know what it is about these drugs, blood? But I'm saying though, bruh, I'm saying, niggas get a little money, bruh, and just always let the drugs take them down the drain, bruh? Blood could've been that nigga right now, like, nigga, that DMX, blood, you out here like, like a common smoker, blood? Like, you was the nigga, now you just out here like a common smoker, blood? I know niggas in Arizona that be showing me, blood, I ain't got pictures of blood coming to the dope spot, buying dope, all kinda shit, blood, straight smoker, straight smoker, owing the dope man ten dollars, it's straight smoker, straight smoker shit, I'm good. You know, I can't respect it, bruh, like, you feel me, you supposed to be, I thought you was a stronger nigga than that, I thought blood was like, a more like mentally like, secure mentally, you know, a mentally guided nigga, like, but blood is a pot of guided nigga, that's that potter, blood, a pot of guided nigga, I'm saying. Damn shame, damn shame, though, I used to fuck, I fucked it with blood hard, I fucked it with blood heavy, I'm blood, damn shame, damn shame. He went to jail for taxes or drugs, I'm saying, why you not paying your taxes? You not keeping up with your taxes, blood, it's the drugs though, the drug, he didn't go to jail for drug, he went to jail for taxes, but you know it's the drugs got blood all off his shit, nigga, you're DMX, why are you going to jail for a year for tax, like, bruh? You all off your shit, blood, that's that potter, blood, you ain't folk here, bruh, that's that potter, that's why. You on crack though? How am I on crack, blood? You're on crack, blood, you ain't even got no profile pic and your name is Starboy, you got a name that's my phrase, fucking follower, fucking fan, admire ass, nigga, you got a name that's one of my phrase and shit that I come up with, straight bitch, blood, look, watch this, blah, fuck out my face, blood, bitch ass. That's that fucking potter, blood, fucking weirdo. Selfie, with the weed. I blame his team around him. How could you blame his team around him and he a grown ass man? How could you blame, nigga, that's that, that sounds stupid as fuck, you blame his team around, that nigga's a grown ass man, nigga? Nigga, you in control of your own actions, nigga, he ain't no fucking kid, nigga, nobody gotta hold your hand through life, nigga? I'm saying, bruh, ain't no team around you, nigga, you your own man, nigga, I'm saying, bruh. Why you yelling out, blah, look, watch this, blood, shut up, blood, blah, fuck outta here, bruh? Niggas is weird, bruh. DMX didn't have a team. DMX a grown ass man, bruh, ain't nobody put the pipe to your lips, the primo to your lips, whatever the fuck is, blood? You a grown ass man, nigga, you in control of your own actions, bruh? Fuck that, man, ain't, ain't nobody fucking the responsibility to hold no nigga hand through life, blood? Fuck that, I'm not finna hold no, nigga, if you wanna be a fucking smoker, go be a fucking smoker, blood, that, yo bad, yo bad, shit. I'm just saying, bruh, ain't my, it ain't my job, like, I got a few homies out here on some smoker shit, running around here off that crystal, straight off that cr- smoker shit running around here, nigga, it ain't my bad to go rescue you, nigga, nigga, you a grown ass blood, nigga? Nigga, that's what you wanna do, nigga, you wanna be in the street dusty, nigga, like a fucking smoker, blood, in front of stores, sitting at bus stops and shit, blood, sit your bum ass there then, blood? Oh, no, I'm from Queen Street, dog, I wanna be out here bragging, nigga, with all this gold on, looking like a fucking king, blood, well respected, blood? That's what I wanna do, bruh, that's what, that's what controls my life, blood, that's what drives me, blood? Not no fucking potter, no crystal, blood, so, if that's what you choose to do, yo bad, bruh, yo bad, I'm saying. Uh, let me see, requesting to go live with you, negative sausage fest, bruh. Can I get your lawyer number? I got a case, I need her to fight, I'm, look, bruh, there's a million lawyers in the world, blood, go find you one. Blah, fuck out my face, bruh, fucking weird. Fucking weirdo, bruh. DMX is finished, no come, that nigga been finished, bruh, that nigga, that shit been over, bruh, that shit, that's that potter. Blood, anytime a nigga like that got, blood, what the fuck, real nigga, you see Ayala fix my life, what the fuck you need Ayala to fix your life, blood? How the fuck Ayala go fix your life, blood? You gotta fix your life, smoker ass nigga, what the fuck you talk? Ayala fix Ayala, what the fuck that bitch name? Ayala fix my life, I need Ayala to fix, who the fuck gonna fix Ayala life, blood? How the fuck Ayala gonna fix my life, bruh? Nigga, hold on, blood, get the fuck outta here, bruh, you seen how blood son was getting at him, blood, no respect, blood? I'm saying, that's that smoke, that's that smoker shit, bruh? I'm trying to get some potter on credit right now, you know what? Well, let me free you, blood, so you can go take care of that, blah, fuck out my face, bruh, I'm saying, go get you something, though, that's, go get you something, I'm saying. Uh, let me see, what's your name? Blood, why you look like that, blood? Look at your long ass face, blood, oblong face, blood, get your bitch ass outta here, look, watch this, blood? Blah, fuck outta here, bruh, weird ass nigga? Why you look like that, low key gay boy, bruh? You look like a might suck it ass nigga, bruh? You look like you might suck it, bruh? Looking real feminine out here, bruh? Shit, grow your mustache, bruh? How about that, for started grow your mustache, how about selfie? Queen Street, there's a lot of motherfuckers watching this bracket right now, I love y'all too, I'm good. Uh, Bommy Man, what the fuck? Cheeseburger dough, cheeseburger dough, what, blood? What you talking about, bruh? You ain't even got no profile pic either, blood, watch this, blood? Nigga, let me free you too, blood, you a lost soul, blood, let me release you, I just released you, bruh? Was cracking cuh? Uh, I couldn't tell you, let me release you too, blood, you seem like a tortured soul too, blood, you seem like you having issues and you go out the door, let me release you. This nigga be weird, bruh, you hear, blood? Who's cracking cuh? I don't know, I couldn't tell you, bruh? I don't know, fuck you asking me for it. Roll one, bro? I just got through smoking, why I gotta roll one, blood? You roll one, blood? The fuck? Fuck type of nigga, like, that shit kinda gay to me, bruh, I don't like a nigga just tell me like he wanna see me small, that's like a nigga tell me to put something sexy on, bruh? Like, you know that, like, that, bruh, like, where the weed at? Like, where the weed at? That's like he telling me, like, blood, where the night game, like, like, blood, that's kinda gay, bruh, I don't like that shit, bruh? Fuck you tell, what the fuck I need to be small? I look, I look more attractive smoking to you or something, bruh? I'm saying, bruh? Fuck you worry about if I'm smoking or not, bruh? I'm good, I'm good. Gee, bruh? Type of nigga tell me stop, start, like, roll one now. Like, like, blood, that's like a nigga go put something sexy on, blood. Get your goofy ass the fuck outta here. Fuck you talking about, bruh? What features you got on the mixtape? I don't know. Guess it gonna be a surprise. That was, that was gay, bruh. I don't like when nigga do that, bruh. Roll one up, bruh. Where the weed, a new weed? Like, blood, why I gotta be smoking, bruh? I look sexy or smoking to you or something, bruh? That's that weird shit, bruh. Why you keep bringing him up, bruh? Like, we not talking about, blood, look, watch this, bruh. We didn't care if Blood was talking or not, bruh. Look, watch this, bruh. This nigga be weird, bruh. All you wanna come talking and be about niggas you don't wanna hear about. Selfie. Yeah, I wanna come talking and be about niggas you don't wanna hear about, blood, motherf**er shit, bruh. What yo new ink say? Why you worried about my new ink, bruh? Don't worry about it, bruh. Hot damn. Nigga, why you wanna go get the same shit, bruh? Don't worry about my ink shit, bruh. Hot damn, bruh. You wanna go get the same ones? Hot damn, bruh. Nigga wanna live my life so bad, huh? Bruh, you gotta live your life, bruh. You can't do what I do, bruh. You can't do me, bruh. You gotta do you, bruh. What do your tits say? You wanna go get the same ones? Negative, bruh. Negative. You a crybaby and you shake funny, bad built ass bitch. Fuck you talking about, blood? You a bad built ass. Blood, look at you, blood. You fuckin' talking about crybaby, blood? You should be a crybaby with your bad built ass, blood. Shake fucked up, blood. Flat ass booty, blood. You ain't got no ass. Titties look stupid as fuck, blood. Shut the fuck up, blood. If I block your goofy ass, bitch. Fuck you talking about? Fucking weirdo. You see this bitch? Bad built ass, blood. I'm saying, bruh. Look at that bitch shape, blood. Where she go? Look, here, blood. Look at this bitch shape, blood, look. Look, look, look at your bad built ass, blood. You don't knock it the fuck, bitch think she got an angle. You see any bitch try, try to make it like, blood, get your bad built ass the fuck out my face, bitch. The fuck you talking about? Bitch, let me see your toes, bitch. Let me, you wanna go live? Let me see your toes right now, bitch. Pull your toes out. Where you at, bitch? Go live right now. Let me see your toes right now, bitch. Bad built, I bet your ugly. I bet your shit not done. Ugly ass, bitch, shut the fuck up. Come on, you're talking, blood. What you want, some attention? You wanting some attention, bitch? Let me see your toes right now. Go live, bitch. I'm saying. Stupid bitch. Sharon Always Win. Hi Sharon, how you doing Sharon? He off the powder. Why I'm off the powder? I'm not off no fucking powder. Weird ass nigga. Look, watch this stuff. Look, watch this stuff. You could go meet up with the powder man yourself, though. Fuck out my face, bruh. So weird ass the fuck outta here. Fuck you telling me what I'm on? Where that bitch go? Shut that bitch down. Where your bad built ass go? Come back. Look, she's quiet. Shut that bitch down. Bad built ass. I know what the fuck I be talking about. Bad, bad, you thought you slick. You fucking try, you had an angle, bitch. Bad built ass. Go live right now. Shut that bitch down. Down. Selfie. Queen Street, there's a lot of motherfuckers watching this bracket right now. Watching me blaze your bad built ass bitch. Saying, bruh. Why she ain't talking right now? Why you get quiet? Why she quiet? I'm saying. Retreat, retreat. Yo Bosco, you wanna be my OG? I don't even know you, bruh. Fuck no. I don't wanna be your OG. I don't even know you, bruh. I don't know what you done did in your life, bruh. I'm saying, bruh. All my niggas I knew for years, blood. I watched these niggas grow up, nigga. We grew up together, bruh. I'm saying, bruh. I'm not trying to meet no new nigga, bruh. Wonder what you gonna be like, bruh. I'm saying, bruh. She just said something. Where she at? She ain't said shit, bruh. Where she at, bruh? Bad built ass, bruh. Where she at, bruh? She ain't said shit. Where you at? You didn't say about gonna lie, though. I bet you ain't finna show me your toes right now, bitch. Saying, you didn't say you finna show me the toes right now, bitch. I don't say nothing. Show me the toes right now. Show me the toes right now. Saying, weird bitch. That's how you shut a bitch down, blood. Oh, you a bad bitch? Let me see your toes right now, bitch. Right now. Right now, this very second, right now. Let me see if you keep it together, bitch. I'm saying. Bitch, put a bitch on the spot real fast. Shut your, shut a bitch down real fast. Take off your fucking shoe. Let me see them toes right now, bitch. I'm saying. Shut a bitch up real fast, real fast. Sup, bro? I listen to your track. Truth is, it's dope. Going through it is hard as fuck. Those jeans are banging. Good looking, bro. Good looking, bro. Uh, see how these millennium ass kids asked to be put on, bruh? Yeah, like, right? You see that shit? You gonna be my OG. Like, bruh, like, like, that's how these niggas be used to, bruh. Like, yeah, that's my OG. Like, yeah, you a Blood. This my little shit, bruh. You a Blood, you a homie. That's how you get put on. Like, bruh, that shit be weird, right, bruh? What the fuck? Blood niggas just think, a nigga just meet niggas. Hey, I want you to be from my life. Fuck that, bruh. When niggas got put on the hood, blood, when niggas got put on the hood, that's 'cause niggas, we grew up together. We went to school together. We knew each other. We went to school together. Other niggas that we recruited or other niggas that recruited niggas, they knew them niggas. They had, nigga don't just meet no nigga and say, "Hey, I like you. You're a gangster. Can I hang with you?" "Yeah, what's your name, shorty?" "My name Shorty Dewa." "All right, you a Blood now." Fuck outta here, bruh. I'm saying, bruh. She probably got toes like Myra, blood. Did you see that bitch? Shut the fuck up. Shut her ass down. Bad built ass. And I bet you her body just like I said it would. Bad built ass, blood. A prostitute body having that. Trying to make it look good, bitch. Trying to bend her fucking waist, then try to make it look, you know how they do. That's why they fuck angles. Angle, they bend they fucking waist, then they trying to poke it out like that. Bitch, get your bad built ass the fuck outta here, bruh. Twist it up, all these pretzel body bitch. She ain't back. You keep telling her she back. She ain't back. That bitch shut down, blood. Where she at? That bitch ain't just shut that bitch. Oh, there you go, blood. Look, there you go, blood. Your ugly ass. I bet you ain't gonna go live, though. Watch this, bruh. Real ugly ass. Second, I'll blaze your ass in a moment. Go live, bitch. Let me see your toes right now. Your ugly ass, bruh. Let me see right now. That's what I thought. Exactly, exactly. Retreat, bitch. Your ugly ass, blood. Bad built ass. Thought you were bad with that fucking angle, bitch. Fuck outta here, bruh. Saying, blood, that shredding, look at that shredding ass synthetic ass weed, bitch. Ugly ass, bruh. Fuck outta here with that synthetic ass shit, bruh. Your fucking profile pic ain't, your profile pic supposed to be like your most fabulous pic to post, supposed to attract a motherfucker. Bitch, you fucking encouraged me to go away. Ugly, bad built ass bitch with that cheap ass outfit on, blood. Fuck outta here, bruh. Bullshit ass skirt. You seen that bitch's cheap ass skirt, bro? That synthetic ass weed, bitch. Slap your ugly ass. Let me see, uh, negative. Stop, you niggas start requesting to go live with me, bruh. Sausage fest, I don't need it, bruh. I wanna play with you, nigga. Bitch got me fucked up, bruh. You seen that bitch? She got her fucking nerve, fucking audacity. Blood, your profile pic, when you on, when you on Instagram and you trying to get some follower, blood, you know, your profile pic is a start, but your profile pic's supposed to attract a motherfucker and make a motherfucker wanna follow you, man. Your, your profile pic's supposed to be interesting, blood. You supposed to have on your best outfit. Bitch, you looked like you was cleaning the yard. Stupid bitch. Uh, what you do? What's up, my nigga, though, blood? What's the deal, blood? Hold on. Selfie. Oh, that was blurry. I don't like that. I ain't supposed to, that was blurry. Did old boy ever stop calling you? Yep. Been blocked, blood. Been blocked, blood. Body made rum. BMW body, bitch. You seen that bitch? I'm saying. She retreated now. Block that bitch now. Nigga, keep taking selfies. 'Cause I keep bracketing. You keep watching me, though, bruh. Why you still here watching, bruh? Ain't no bitches in here. You don't have to be here watching with your gay ass. Blood, look, watch this, bruh. I'ma free you. I'ma release you too, bruh. Get your goofy ass the fuck outta here, bruh. Nigga, you keep taking selfies and you still here watching, blood? You enjoying it. You fucking enjoying it. You still here watching. Gay ass. These niggas steady taking selfies. Yeah, and you still here watching. So you clearly enjoying it, nigga. You clearly enjoying that shit, bruh. So weird, uh. Fuck outta here, bruh. Anything you don't like, guess what? Kindly escort yourself the fuck out my face, bruh. Niggas gay, scum. I swear, bruh. Like, nigga, come here and say some gay, like, weird shit, bruh. Like, what you, what you in here looking for? A boyfriend? Get your bitch ass outta here, bruh. Nigga acting like they came in here to expect a nigga to be in here with this dick. I'm like, what you looking for, bruh? Get your bitch ass the fuck outta here. What type of show you looking for? What type of show you looking for? You drink milk? Uh, fuck no, blah. Fuck you talking about, blood? Where the fuck you, where the fuck you coming on that milk question, blood? Blah. Fuck outta here. Here, do you drink milk, blood? Weird nigga, bruh. Do you drink milk? Fuck no. Fuck no. I'ma free you. You like that? Free these niggas. Blood, you gotta free these niggas, blood. Niggas just be lingering, appearing some light, blood. Like, somebody damn left these niggas behind somewhere a long time ago, blood, blood. Just lingering, like, like, fuck out my face, dog. Let me free you, bruh. Nigga wanna linger in afterlife and shit. Blood, you another nigga like, bruh, why you like, bruh? I thought you was a cool nigga. You asking me about some fucking Russian cream, bruh. Look, bruh, you getting annoying, bruh. Look, watch this. I gotta block you for a little while. I might let you come back. Hit my DM, though. Fuck outta here, bruh. Let me tell us some Russian cream, bruh. You been a cool nigga, like, but you, you do start to get annoying. You be saying stupid shit, though, bruh. Let me free you too, bruh. You was cool for a second, though, bruh. Hit my DM, bruh. I might let you come back, bruh. We might talk about it, bruh. You fucking annoying, though, bruh. Keep doing your thing, bruh. Man, right? Eh, what is my thing really? Like, really, you're like, what is my thing? Just being me, bruh. Like, this shit just like, like, ain't even nothing I do, bruh. Like, what am I? I just be me, like, bruh. I just be being me. Yo, answer my DMs. I'm trying to come smoke at your crib. Look, watch this, bruh. Get your gay ass the fuck out my face, blah. What the fuck are you talking about, blood? You be saying weird shit, bruh. Fuck, why you niggas be DMing me? It's a reason I didn't open that, bruh, 'cause I know it's gonna be some Starboy shit, bruh. You ain't even got no fucking profile pic, bruh. I'm not answering no DM for no fucking spirits, bruh. I ain't afraid of no ghosts. I ain't afraid of no ghosts, bruh. I answer no DM for no fucking spirits, bruh. You ain't got no fucking profile pic DMing me. What the fuck are you DMing me about? What's the deal? What's up, my nigga? What's the deal? You from Harlem? You Harlem nigga? You, you from Harlem? What's the deal? Yo, I'm telling, sir. Up, sir. Uh, why you saying the fuck? Look, watch this, bruh. We don't know what you're talking about. Look. Make your shit clear. Fuck outta here. What the fuck? You saying what the fuck? What the fuck was up them shades, blood, and that spoke coat and that t-shirt, blood? You thought that was fashionable, blood? Beanhead ass nigga. The fuck outta here, blood? Fuck, you thought that was, blood? Talking about the fuck? That's what we should be saying about your outfit, nigga. Fuck outta here, blood. Man, I'm a spud jacket with the t-shirt and shit. Blood, them cheap ass shades. Fuck, I mean, you a Ray-Ban, bruh. Fuck outta here. Uh, yeah, bruh, yeah, bruh. Watch this, watch this, bruh. Three, two, one. Free, blood. Free, blood. You need that podcast. I do need a podcast, bruh. I do. You right, bruh. I do need a podcast. Let's make that happen, bruh. You right. I do need a podcast. Uh, Boston checking in. What's the deal, Boston? Who is this guy right here? Let me see, bruh. Oh my God, blood. Blood, you don't shut your big beard ass up, blood. Fake Philly looking ass nigga. Big beard, ot looking, that one. Get your goofy ass the fuck outta here. Big beard ass nigga, bruh. Stupid looking ass. Blood, you got stupid fucking face. Blood, why your hairline so far back? Big beard ass, bruh. Beard bigger than mine looking at, bruh. Saying, bruh. Why your beard so long, blood? You listen to that new Mazzy? Nah, I don't think nobody listening to that new Mazzy. I ain't hear nobody playing that shit. I heard everybody playing Victory Lab. Niggas playing Victory Lab. I'm hearing that. I don't hear nobody playing that new Mazzy. Have you heard anything about that new Mazzy? I ain't heard nothing about it. I ain't heard no, Crickets? Crickets? I ain't heard nothing about it, bruh. I ain't heard nobody slapping it, I'm saying. It wasn't the one. That wasn't the one. It wasn't the one. It wasn't the one. I'm saying, right, wasn't the one. It wasn't the one. You know, all the other Mazzy, all the other ones, niggas was slapping. Nigga with that Messier Murder She, yeah, niggas Messier Murder, niggas was slapping. This one came out. Crickets? Crickets? It wasn't the one. It wasn't the one. It wasn't the one. God damn, another ghost. Look, bruh. Look, bruh. Let me free you, brother. I ain't afraid of no ghosts. Let me free you, bruh. Mazzy the best rapper out of Cali? Well, this last album ain't saying so, bruh. I don't know. This last album ain't saying that, bruh. This last album ain't saying that, bruh. I'm saying. Shit been out like a month, right? This shit been out like a month or something, bruh. I don't know. Last album ain't saying so, bruh. The other ones, you know, niggas still, I heard, you know, the other ones are slapping. This last album, I don't know. Might be a none, bruh. I'm saying, bruh. I'm saying. Been Crickets. I ain't been hearing nobody slapping that. Nigga been talking about Victory Lab. Nigga been talking about Rollo, Moneybag. Nigga been talking about the Mazzy like that. Nigga been slapping it like that. I ain't been hearing nobody in traffic, so I'm just saying. I, you know, I'm not gonna lie, bruh. That's my nigga. I fuck with Blood. I fuck with Blood shit, Blood shit, oh, but not this album, though. I ain't heard no joints. I ain't heard no joints. I ain't heard no joint. Might not be the ones. Uh, bruh, I asked you who the best rapper was. Look, watch this. Man, I asked you who the best rapper was. Who, who even asked you that, bruh? I didn't even ask you. I didn't ask you who the best rapper was, bruh. I hate when niggas just start volunteering information, bruh. I didn't ask you who the best rapper was. Or who you thought the best rapper was, bruh. Blood put too much music out too fast. Niggas got tired of it. Is that what it was? Exactly, you're right, nigga. Like, blood. Blood was going ham, though. Blood was going ham. It shit hard, though, but I'm just saying. This last little project, it wasn't like, you know. It wasn't like the other ones. It wasn't like. Uh, Bean Town checking in. Bean Town? Bean Town? Where the fuck is that, blood? Bean Town, bruh. Blood, you said that like we were just supposed to know what that was, blood. Bean Town. Blood, what the fuck is that, blood? Blood, you gotta be more specific. Come on, brother. Give us a state or something. Bean Town. Like, that was just run it on. Blood, I thought that was, yeah, Bean Town in here, like, oh shit, my Bean Town, blood. We ain't never heard of that fucking Bean Town, bruh. Heard of that shit. Bean Town. That nigga said, Boston? Oh, okay, but say that, bruh. I'm saying, I don't know Bean Town. Try to come up, no create no new shit, bruh. Try to create no lingo here, blood. You know, you like, we heard of that shit. Bean Town. Fucking Boston, bruh. Fucking Boston. What's the deal? What's the deal? Still say Bean Town. Like, we heard of that shit. Like, that's, that's popular. Yeah, Bean Town. You know them Bean Town, nigga. Blood, we ain't heard of that shit, bruh. Saint Louis Dime, blood. What's the deal, Saint Louis? What's the deal, my brother? Even though you ain't got no profile pic, bruh. You got no profile pic, bruh. I hate when niggas do that. Oh, you know, I'm a real nigga. I don't do the internet like that. Blood, you're on the internet, blood. You a real nigga with a fake profile pic on the, on the internet, bruh. Uh, what do you mean? You don't do the internet like that. You do. You just sneaky, bruh. You just sneaky nigga on the internet, I'm saying, bruh. Sneaky nigga. Night Word checking in. Why, why y'all niggas stand baby all up, blood? Why y'all gotta say all that shit, bruh? Like, all that, damn, bruh. I feel like y'all banging on me, bruh. I could bang on y'all, 'cause this my shit, bruh. I gotta let y'all know what it is, bruh. I'm saying, y'all, y'all good, y'all good. Y'all already good, bruh. Y'all already good. Y'all good. Y'all good. Y'all my folks. All y'all my good peoples. Y'all good. Bean Town equals Mexico. Look, watch this, bruh. That sounded racial. Now, we don't do that over here, bruh. Go think about that, blood. Put that in detention. That sounded racial. That sounded racial. I'm sure that's not what that was. That sounded racist. What's the deal, Van Corr? Good evening. What's the deal, Van Corr? You heard, blood? That's a, that was fucking racist. Bean Town equals Mexico. You thought that was funny, huh? That statement equals fucking get the fuck out my face. Goofy ass, with that racist shit, bruh. You with that racist shit, bruh. I'm not a fucking racist. Ain't no racism out here, bruh. I don't enjoy that, bruh. I don't like it. Weird, uh. Saying I said, bruh, fucking racist shit, bruh. Fuck outta here with that shit, bruh. Love me some meat, hop pussy. Respect morning side and his bitch. What's the deal, morning side? I'm, bruh, Inglewood morning side. Inglewood morning side, blood. Yeah. Respect morning side in this bitch. What's the deal, morning side, huh, bruh? Inglewood morning side? Inglewood morning side, bruh? Yeah, Inglewood morning side, eh? Hold on. This Inglewood selfie, though. Queen Street is a lot of motherfuckers watching this bracket right now. I love y'all, too. That Inglewood selfie, though, I'm saying. Get another one, hold on. Just for the baby, though. Another one for the babies. What's the deal, Young West? What's the deal, my brother? What's the deal? What's the deal? Tell me something good, bruh. Tell me something good. Uh, Louisiana, why you just yelling out your city, bruh? Look, look, watch this, bruh. You didn't even know how to do that. Bruh, go get yourself together, bruh. Don't just come yell out your fucking, bruh. Get the fuck outta here. Louisiana, like, bruh, fuck outta here, bruh. That one ain't the way to do it, bruh. That's that weird shit, bruh. Go get it together, bruh. I feel you. I love me some poppies. You love me some poppies? That's what you like, you know. That's what you like. You know, that's what you like, baby, you know. Uh, where the hoes at? You know what? I don't like when niggas ask me that, bruh, like, oh. Where yo hoes at, bruh? This is what you should ask, man. Like, don't worry about my hoes. Like, you should ask yourself, where yo hoes at, bruh? I, I hate when niggas be worried about my hoes. Like, don't be worried about nothing, nigga. You need to be worried about your hoes. And then a nigga that ask me where the hoes at, to me, that already sets off a alarm in my mind. Bruh, ain't got no bitches. Hey, Bosco, where the hoe at? Bruh, ain't got no bitches. That's exactly, like, that's how, like, it just come up that fast, bruh. Bosco, where the hoes at? Bruh, ain't got no bitches. Bruh, ain't got no bitches. Your smile like that. Olivia? Olivia, let me see. Let me see. I gotta look at, hold on, y'all keep moving. That's what, let me pin this for a second. Kinda I look at that profile pic close. Bruh, hold on. I should, like, chill. Hello, baby. How you doing? That was cute, no cute. Let me see. Why we don't never see you with a hoe, brother? Like, 'cause I don't want you to see me with no fucking hoe, brother. Get your goofy ass the fuck out my face, nigga. Fuck you, so I don't want you to see me with no fucking hoe. That's why you don't see me with no fucking hoe. You don't see me with a lot of shit that I don't want you to see me with, brother. Goofy ass, bruh. Starch Safari shirt wearing, eh? Bruh, you seen that nigga with the button up shirt? Why we don't see you with no hoe, brother? The fuck? I don't want you to see, why you steady looking for me to be with hoe, bruh? Why, why I ain't never seen you with a hoe, brother? Butter pecan colored ass nigga, bruh. Your butter pecan ass, eh? The fuck up? Why I don't never see you with no hoe? Bruh, you don't even fucking know me to see me with no hoe. You don't fucking know me. Why would you ever see me? You only, you only see me on fucking live, bruh. I'm seeing you going, so why the fuck would you see me with a hoe? You don't fucking know me, bruh. Butter pecan looking ass, bruh. Weird ass nigga with that fucking super, super duper starch Safari shirt on, bruh. Resilient shirt wearing, eh? That resilient ass collar, bruh. Stupid face, eh? Fuck you. I went to the clinic, brother. Had a crop top on. What the fuck is this? You know, high fashion, bruh. Culture, it's the culture. When you copping the grills. You know what? I really, like, kinda don't want a grill like that too bad. I already got a great smell. I might just go get my teeth whitened a little bit, bruh. You know, years of coffee drinking and blood smoking. Then brought it like my shade down a little bit, but I might just go get my shit. I already have a great smell. I don't wanna show you, bruh, 'cause, you know? But I already have a great smell, actually. I think, I feel like, you know, grill kinda take away from a naturally beautiful smile person. Tell them, niggas ask the most dumb shit ever. Right, right? But you know what? You know what? It kinda makes it entertaining, though. Like, like, they do, they do. It's annoying. Even though it's annoying, it's fucking, fucking annoying, but they, it's like a bit entertaining. You can't lie. It is fun when we black, they start, blah. You can't tell me it ain't funny, we, blah. You alright, OG? You alright? Oh, poopy. What's the matter, poopy? I'm saying, bruh, it be like kinda fun, right? Like, sometimes like, fucking them up, eh? It be like, just like we did, like, it kinda like nostalgically take me back to the hood a day with a fucking bus. You're like, where you from, bruh? You feel me? It's like nostalgic for me, bruh. Uh, why you keep yelling out block, bruh? Like, why you yelling out block? Look, watch this, bruh. Jesus, bruh, quit yelling out my shit, bruh. That's annoying. Hey, relax, bruh. Take a little something off that. Relax, relax. You like, you remember that, though, them old school days? Like, niggas used to fuck shit up, bruh. I remember that shit, bruh. That's why my hands so fucked up now. Like, my hands is fucked. I ain't gonna lie. I literally, I ain't gonna lie. Literally broke every finger. I literally have broke, I literally broke every finger on both hands. Look, you see these hands? Look, you see my, you see how my hands look? You could tell these, that, these hands, they get busy, like, these niggas hands, they get like, you feel me? Like, I literally broke, look, you see these knuckles? Look, you see this shit? Like, I done literally broke every finger, thumbs included, thumb. I done broke every finger on both hands. Swear to God, look at these. Look at these shits, like, you see these shapes in these, eh? Queen Street, not from basketball. I don't play basketball. I broke every finger on both hands. Swear, swear. Cast up, cast up. Uh, let me see. No, for real, serious shit, bruh. Like, that's what I'm saying. These niggas be talking like, niggas see me little, niggas see me get fucked up one time in a setup and just like determine my whole life. Oh, you got fucked, like, you know how many niggas I done fucked up, eh? I mean, it was about time. It was about time, 'cause you know how many niggas I done fucked up. Queen Street, it's about time. Alright. Alright, I accept that. That's why I could take it so good. That's why I took it so good. You know what? 'Cause you know how many niggas I done fucked up. Queen, you know how many niggas I fucked up after that lo, after that loss that you started? You know how many niggas I fucked up after that? I'm saying, bruh. I could take the good with the bad. I take the good with the bad, bruh. I done fucked you niggas up, bruh. What goes around comes around, bruh. Goes around, comes around. Why you always talking shit, P? Bruh, why you always talking shit? Bruh, let me do my thing. Bruh, take your own fucking advice. Look, why you always talking shit? Let me do my thing. Goofy ass, bruh, I ain't talking about you. Goofy ass, bruh. The fuck outta here. Watch this, bruh. He set you free too, eh? Goofy ass nigga. I hate when a nigga be worried about that. Why you always talking shit? I ain't talking that about you. Get your bitch ass the fuck out my face, bruh. Fuck you talking about? I ain't talking about you, nigga. Saying, bruh. Goofy ass, bruh. Get tired of these niggas, bruh. Nigga be weird. Watch this, bruh, YouTube, bruh. Get your goofy ass the fuck outta here, bruh. Saying, bruh, you got too much time on your hands. You sitting here watching, bitch ass nigga. You got too much time on your hands, man. Fuck outta here, nigga. Saying, bruh, ain't nobody invited you, nigga. You need to be talking too much, bruh. That's what I'm saying, bruh. You, who, why you like, why you talking shit, bruh? That's what I'm saying. You, why the fuck are you worried about my, bruh? Let me do my thing, bitch ass nigga. Queen Street, eh? Take your own fucking advice, bitch ass nigga. Nigga's just weird, bruh. Sco, I don't got no mustache, but I'm a real nigga. I'll be the judge of that. I'll be the judge of that, bruh. I'll be my own judge of that, I'm saying. Can't trust a nigga that got no mustache, bruh. I'll be the judge of that. What up with little Wayne and weak ass raps? Nigga, what up with your weak ass spelling, nigga? You talking little Wayne, weak ass rap? What up with your weak ass spelling, nigga? Did you see that shit, bruh? You ain't never ever wanted spelling, B. Nigga, you gonna talk about a nigga weak ass rap? Let me hear your rap. Oh, you can't write one, 'cause you can't even spell. You talking about little Wayne, weak raps, nigga? You can't even spell, bruh. Saying, and we only got a minute left, bruh, so make it good. Damn, we been on here an hour already? That was bracketing. Of course, that was bracketing. This nigga talking, he, he fucking tried. He thought he was slick, bruh. You see, he couldn't even type it right. He was saying with little Wayne. What the fuck did he even write, little Wayne? Like, bruh, you can't even spell, bruh. What's up with your weak ass spelling, bruh? What's up with your terrible grammar? Your horrible grammar, bruh. Shit was terrible, bruh.